Good evening. Welcome to the April 15th Board of Selectment meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on Foxborough Cable Access. We're going to enter into executive session, which we will be coming out of on or about seven o'clock. So can I have a motion, please?
Motion to enter into executive session for union negotiations and strategy discussion regarding contract for the Boydin Library Employees Association, MLSA, MFT, AFT, AFL-CIO.
No, no, no.
May I interrupt? I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
It's for AFSMI. I'm sorry, do we have the wrong one on there?
Yeah, Boydin was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Let me just see, we're doing it for AFSMI Local 1702, Unit B.
A signed letter of agreement between the Town of Foxborough and the Department of Public Works.
Are you on the right agenda?
Yeah, just read the, right here. Unit B, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Doc. Motion to enter into executive session for union negotiations and strategy discussion regarding contract for the Foxborough DPW Employees Union, AFSCME Local 1702, Unit B.
Second.
Go call.
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes.
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Okay, we'll be back shortly. Okay, welcome back to the April 15th meeting. We just exited executive session. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is today's one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Do we have any citizens input?
Anybody on citizens input?
Uh, no.
Anybody in the audience for citizens input? First on the agenda, public hearing for the Kraft Entertainment Group. Would you like to come forward, Jess?
I need a motion to open.
Yep.
Motion to open the public hearing.
You have to read whole.
The Select Board acting as a local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183a, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Chapter 141 of the Acts of 2020, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, beginning at 7:05 in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, to review the renewal application submitted by Kraft Sports and Entertainment, LLC for the 2025 annual entertainment license. All listed events in the application are proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the town manager's office. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Second.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have Steph back?
Well, we can still go. Because we got the majority.
Okay. Well, welcome, Jess.
Thank you for having me. Jessie knows with Gillette Stadium, Kraft Sports and Entertainment. Do you want me to hold on for Steph or just jump in?
See if she's there.
Her person.
Yeah.
Those are beach bags.
She's getting a drink. Let's go. Go ahead.
Sure. So before you this evening to seek renewal for the 2025 annual event license, the current event license will expire on April 24th. So between now and the start of this event license, we'll have one more Revs match. And then the first event of this license would be the ACDC concert, the first weekend of May. So we have 10 concerts before you this evening, as well as the balance of the Revs season. For interesting call-outs, the Revs season is pretty standard operating procedure. We do have another Messi match on July 9th. So the anticipated attendance for that match will probably be another full stadium event, which is exciting for us. We have, like I said, 10 concerts before you. There are three back-to-back shows. So The Weeknd, Coldplay, and Morgan Wallen are all back-to-back shows. We also have three new artists to the stadium, which is really exciting. We have Kendrick Lamar, Post Malone, and then Morgan Wallen are also, those are three acts that we haven't had in the building before. So it's nice to see artists sort of making the leap from smaller venues, from arenas, into the stadium. So with that being said, none of the artists have requested any curfew extensions. We are running the train. We do have them secured for all of the events, which is a key component to the traffic management plan. The traffic management plan is before MassDOT. I believe we submitted it about two weeks ago. It expires in, I believe, the first week of June. There are some minor modifications to that, but we don't have any reason to believe that it won't be approved in timely fashion. I think, I think that's about it from, just from the 10,000-feet view.
John or George, would you like to weigh in on it at all?
No, we've reviewed, our committee reviewed the application. What we, we were very impressed with the police and fire, as well as the other town departments in terms of their coordination with the stadium. So we, and with the, I want to say the depth of the license, we felt very comfortable to recommend for approval. The two areas that we have held out and put in our review were more in relation to some amendments that the town had asked for, which, you know, we felt, you know, we concur, you know, in terms of the out-of-town insurance for, for the police, special details, and the water department. So, you know, we would stand behind, and, you know, our approval is always conditioned on the fact that the town is, town police, fire, and public safety, as well as all the town departments are supported financially, as well as other, with whatever they need, whatever they feel they need to be able to execute their plans. You know, we live in an age of heightened security. I think, I can speak for John. John had comments in relation to wanting to shout out to the police and public safety.
When you hear how much they work these plans beforehand, you really have to tip your hat to them and say, boy, this is really an impressive organization. People are coming from all over the country to see what the Foxborough Police and Fire Department do to protect this town and the public space up there at the stadium. So I'm really impressed by the depth of their work. And when you hear what's going on, as you know, preparation for next year with the World Cup, it's even more complicated and requiring a very extant amount of time on their part. You know, but they seem to handle it like it was another day in the normal course of business. They know it isn't, but we're very impressed by how hard they worked to get things done right the first time.
Chief, do you have anything you'd like to say? Please come up. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Obviously, since it's the entertainment license for the whole year, the board and probably the residents may kind of want to know what goes into just saying, hey, off we go and running. So when we, before we kick off this year, we always do a little, what about last year? So if people don't know, we had a great, successful year last year. All of our relationships with our state and federal partners is outstanding. The police department itself, the command staff, the relationships that we have are second to none in the country when it comes to bringing people in and supporting this operation. As we, most people know, we are the smallest police department in the entire country to host a venue of this size. And this venue is the largest outdoor venue in all of New England. So if you have five or six minutes, I can just talk a couple, a couple of things if you have any questions, and then we can roll them into looking forward. So we had 21 Revs games, we had 10 Patriot Games, Supercross. On top of that, we had Supercross, Tom Brady event, Monster Jam. We threw on another, three concerts. And then we had three days at Bridgewater State University, which was housing 25 to 30 on each day. Those are a lot of events. Staffing-wise, with the mutual aid agreement that we have under Master and Law, able to bring in law enforcement officers throughout the Commonwealth of Mass to work under the command and control of the Foxborough Police, we have successfully staffed every single event that's been requested by the Kraft Group. This staffing model gets asked many, many times at the NFL Security Conference, chief, how does the smallest police department in the country get to full staffing when cities Chicago, Baltimore, they can't do it? And they have to use private security, or they have to run short. So the relationships within the agency and with our fellow chiefs and the commitment from our surrounding communities willing to send their offices over here to work has been fantastic, and it remains fantastic. So if you run into other select board members from, always say thank you, please. It's always a sales pitch, all the time. And the offices that come over are fantastic. Obviously, we track custodies, we track use of force, we track PCs, our use of force numbers. We were down five this year, zero citizens complaints, and we also had no IODs to any of the staff or any of the events this year. So that, that may help with the, the insurance rate for what it's worth. When we, when we talk about these large events, we talk about a security level that is second to none with the Kraft Group having the Safety Act. So one of the requirements is SWAT offices. So with our mutual aid agreements statewide, we're able to bring in, if needed, up to 157 SWAT offices on any given day when needed throughout the state of Mass. And this was key when we start looking at FIFA and some of those security requirements. Technology, we're always growing, we're always changing, trying to manage hundreds and hundreds of offices per event, and then thousands of them through the course of the year. We've had some technologies using QR codes, mapping, 3D mapping, interactive placement and job assignments. And now we have pushed it to the next level of signing in and signing out. So that way, the flow is seamless and it's to the, to the, to the dot. So overall, it's been a very successful year, but it's not successful because I'm the one speaking about it. You really, really have to thank the offices in that agency. You know, when you're looking at 42 offices, every single one of them become an OIC. Many of them get told no on weekends, they get told on summer vacations, they get told no on holidays, no, you can't have the day off, I need you to work. And at, I think we hit 23 weekends, or 23 major sold-out events. It's, it's a big number. So, but we had great success. And it's all because of staff work for me. Every single day they're working, and, you know, FIFA and World Cup, the heart and soul of FIFA is the stadium. And that's what we're tasked with, that last mile of making sure it's a safe, secure event. And the dynamics, the, the working group for FIFA World Cup Boston 2026 has really put us, there's 14 working groups, we're probably running four of them, and we're involved in six of them. These are meeting weekly, and then we're taking these best practices and using them against the whole nation and how we're going to manage these. So it's very fluid, but we already have a sound model. Army-Navy game really showed us what level of security that we're going to have to meet and maintain. Now we're just going to have to do it over seven events and maybe over 46 days straight up at Gillette, plus a training site. So that one's going to be a challenge. But overall, on the license, there were a couple edits here and there, just obviously a license is kind of, it's kind of organic. As times change, we, we have to change, we have to adapt. And it's adapting to our needs and the communication, the relationship is excellent.
For those, for those that aren't here, obviously, can you explain what that insurance policy that we're referring to is, just so?
So, let me, let me rewind the clock here. Under Ed O'Leary, a long, long time ago, police officers could work in another community. And essentially, their police chief could say, hey, go ahead, go work, you're on your own. That officer would come over to head of Foxborough, and Bob Cutler eventually gave Deputy Chief Noonan and myself the authority, and we would swear them in as reserved police officers. And they would become employees of the town, and they would work as a reserve police officer, even though they weren't a reserve police officer in their, in their department that they came from. Police reform a couple of years ago ended the reserve officer status. It took away the part-time police academy and mandated that every police officer has to be a fully-trained, MPTC-certified police officer as a full-time. So what that did, it took my 42 reserve police officers, and over the course of three years, we have lost 80% of them. They're gone. Not that those 40 would allow me to run a whole event. They essentially get all the traffic spots all around town, but they were gone. Every other police agency, including the Norfolk County sheriffs, who had gone to the part-time police academy, could no longer be police officers. There were some exceptions built in there. If you had done so many hours of shift work, they would give you the waiver. But essentially, it was really hard to get shift work if you're a part-time police officer, and details did not count towards that. So none of those hours counted. So then, I think Bill Baker might have got challenged with it, and I think he kind of kicked it down the curve going, I don't, how are we going to, how are we going to challenge, how are we going to deal with bringing people in if they got hurt? How are we going to ensure that the communities where they come from are going to want to do this? Because if, if an officer is to get hurt and they go back to their municipality, that officer is not going to be told, sorry, you went on your own, good luck. The only way a police officer can work ever is under the command and control and the authority of the chief that they work for, which meant the chief gave them the authority to come to Foxborough. So if we had, so, and also, the other part of this was if a, the, the retirement board said having offices working outside of their class is an absolute no-no. So if you had a captain from Plymouth come over to Foxborough, sworn as a reserve, ends up with an injury where his career ends, he would retire as a Foxborough Reserve. Because that was the, that is the position he was working in at the time of the injury. All it would take is one officer to have something bad happen, and you and we would have no offices coming over. So what we had to do is we had to look at a way to ensure, to the best of our ability, to remove some of the liability from our 27 cities and towns who allow their officers to come over here, to give them some kind of support, especially to the chiefs, whether the chief could go back to their town manager or to their select board and be able to justify why they supported the Gillette operation. So they now come under Master and Law, there's a mutual aid agreement that was redrafted that made working in Gillette an event. So the mutual aid agreement is to come over and work the event. So now they're coming over, they're working in their, their class, police officer, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, under the command and control of Foxborough, in their capacity. So the insurance policy, which really hadn't been touched in about 17 or 18 years, when we looked at the compensation, it did not match remotely what an officer was being paid anymore. So we had to bring it up. So now we elevated the, the insurance policy so that if an officer is hurt working up at Gillette, that the officer, the insurance premium would pay the department a portion of their salary and their medical bills. Would it pay it all? Absolutely not. Will it backfill for the overtime? Would that person, no, it won't. It's still underfunded. It's still not where it really should be. But as we know, the premium keeps going up and going up. So what we have now is reasonable. Could it change? Could it go up? Absolutely. If salaries go up, we're going to have to adjust the policy. And that's kind of where we are now, and why the premium was adjusted. And that covers police and fire as well.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions for the board? Anything else on your side, chief?
No.
I'm pretty good. I'm pretty good.
Is there any other amendments that we might want to know about?
Sure. So we discussed the, that insurance policy would be 85% the Kraft Group would be paying for that. And then the other changes that we put in had to do with the costs, reimbursement for details and whatnot. We tried to put a timeframe in there, and we were trying to be consistent with other town bills. So it's basically paid within 30 days following the issuance. And then, and then if they're late, or there's a late payment, it would be pursuant to town bylaws, because that's the way we do it for everybody else. So we, we just incorporated that into it. So there's, it's very clear as to any consequences if there are late payments. And we also clarified some practices that are already in place with the Board of Health and the Public Works Department. I know the water department has been working up there for years. We kind of memorialize that, that in here, and then also with the Board of Health. The Kraft Group has been great, working with our consultant, who the, the health department works with. But we just, again, wanted to make sure our document recommends, reflects actual working relationships and conditions. That's what we have there.
Anything else on your side, Jess?
Nope. We met and discussed all of those, all of the edits, and we're good moving forward with them.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Paul Schreiber.
Mark, well, I.
Bill, aye.
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Motion to approve the 2025 annual entertainment license for Kraft Sports and Entertainment Group.
Second. Mark, yes.
Bill, yes.
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
We can't hear you, but we can see that you're saying yes.
No sound. Yeah, can't hear you.
Stephanie.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the public hearing to transfer the license. Alfred Skip, Restaurant?
Yeah. Krishava.
You guys like to come up?
Do you want to read the public hearing notice?
Review and vote on a transfer of license application of an on-premises annual all-alcohol beverage license from Krishiva to Sidivinyaka. I'm sure I butchered that.
Yeah, Sidivinyaka.
LLC remaining DBA Sandclap Restaurant to Washington Street.
Keep hold. A little further down?
Yeah. Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
The Select Board acting as a local license and authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, beginning at 7:15 in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on the application of a transfer of license of an on-premises annual all-alcohol beverages license from Krishiva Inc. to Sidivinyaka LLC remaining DBA Sandclap Restaurant to Washington Street, Foxborough, Mass. Parren Patel, general manager. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Second.
All in favor?
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes.
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Chief, do you have anything you'd like to say? Please come up. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Obviously, since it's the entertainment license for the whole year, the board and probably the residents may kind of want to know what goes into just saying, hey, off we go and running. So when we, before we kick off this year, we always do a little, what about last year? So if people don't know, we had a great, successful year last year. All of our relationships with our state and federal partners is outstanding. The, the police department itself, the command staff, the relationships that we have are second to none in the country when it comes to bringing people in and supporting this operation. As we, most people know, we are the smallest police department in the entire country to host a venue of this size. And this venue is the largest outdoor venue in all of New England. So if you have five or six minutes, I can just talk a couple, a couple of things if you have any questions, and then we can roll them into looking forward. So we had 21 Revs games, we had 10 Patriot Games, Supercross. On top of that, we had Supercross, Tom Brady event, Monster Jam. We threw on another, three concerts. And then we had three days at Bridgewater State University, which was housing 25 to 30 on each day. Those are a lot of events. Staffing-wise, with the mutual aid agreement that we have under Master and Law, able to bring in law enforcement officers throughout the Commonwealth of Mass to work under the command and control of the Foxborough Police, we have successfully staffed every single event that's been requested by the Kraft Group. This staffing model gets asked many, many times at the NFL Security Conference, chief, how does the smallest police department in the country get to full staffing when cities Chicago, Baltimore, they can't do it? And they have to use private security, or they have to run short. So the relationships within the agency and with our fellow chiefs and the commitment from our surrounding communities willing to send their officers over here to work has been fantastic, and it remains fantastic. So if you run into other select board members from, always say thank you, please. It's always a sales pitch, all the time. And the officers that come over are fantastic. Obviously, we, we track custodies, we track use of force, we track PCs, our use of force numbers. We were down five this year, zero citizens complaints, and we also had no IODs to any of the staff or any of the events this year. So that, that may help with the, the insurance rate for what it's worth. When we, when we talk about these large events, we talk about a security level that is second to none with the Kraft Group having the Safety Act. So one of the requirements is SWAT offices. So with our mutual aid agreements statewide, we're able to bring in, if needed, up to 157 SWAT offices on any given day when needed throughout the state of Mass. And this was key when we start looking at FIFA and some of those security requirements. Technology, we're always growing, we're always changing, trying to manage hundreds and hundreds of offices per event, and then thousands of them through the course of the year. We've had some technologies using QR codes, mapping, 3D mapping, interactive placement and job assignments, and now we have pushed it to the next level of signing in and signing out. So that way, the flow is seamless and it's to the, to the, to the dot. So overall, it's been a very successful year, but it's not successful because I'm the one speaking about it. You really, really have to thank the offices in that agency. You know, when you're looking at 42 offices, every single one of them become an OIC. Many of them get told no on weekends, they get told on summer vacations, they get told no on holidays, no, you can't have the day off, I need you to work. And at, I think we hit 23 weekends, or 23 major sold-out events. It's, it's a big number. So, but we had great success. And it's all because of staff work for me. Every single day they're working, and, you know, FIFA and World Cup, the heart and soul of FIFA is the stadium. And that's what we're tasked with, that last mile of making sure it's a safe, secure event. And the dynamics, the, the working group for FIFA World Cup Boston 2026 has really put us, there's 14 working groups, we're probably running four of them, and we're involved in six of them. These are meeting weekly, and then we're taking these best practices and using them against the whole nation and how we're going to manage these. So it's very fluid, but we already have a sound model. Army-Navy game really showed us what level of security that we're going to have to meet and maintain. Now we're just going to have to do it over seven events and maybe over 46 days straight up at Gillette, plus a training site. So that one's going to be a challenge. But overall, on the license, there were a couple edits here and there, just obviously a license is kind of, it's kind of organic. As times change, we, we have to change, we have to adapt. And it's adapting to our needs and the communication, the relationship is excellent.
For those, for those that aren't here, obviously, can you explain what that insurance policy that we're referring to is, just so?
So, let me, let me rewind the clock here. Under Ed O'Leary, a long, long time ago, police officers could work in another community. And essentially, their police chief could say, hey, go ahead, go work, you're on your own. That officer would come over to head of Foxborough, and Bob Cutler eventually gave Deputy Chief Noonan and myself the authority, and we would swear them in as reserved police officers. And they would become employees of the town, and they would work as a reserved police officer, even though they weren't a reserved police officer in their, in their department that they came from. Police reform a couple of years ago ended the reserve officer status. It took away the part-time police academy and mandated that every police officer has to be a fully-trained, MPTC-certified police officer as a full-time. So what that did, it took my 42 reserved police officers, and over the course of three years, we have lost 80% of them. They're gone. Not that those 40 would allow me to run a whole event. They essentially get all the traffic spots all around town, but they were gone. Every other police agency, including the Norfolk County sheriffs, who had gone to the part-time police academy, could no longer be police officers. There were some exceptions built in there. If you had done so many hours of shift work, they would give you the waiver. But essentially, it was really hard to get shift work if you're a part-time police officer, and details did not count towards that. So none of those hours counted. So then, I think Bill Baker might have got challenged with it, and I think he kind of kicked it down the curve going, I don't, how are we going to, how are we going to challenge, how are we going to deal with bringing people in if they got hurt? How are we going to ensure that the communities where they come from are going to want to do this? Because if, if an officer is to get hurt and they go back to their municipality, that officer is not going to be told, sorry, you went on your own, good luck. The only way a police officer can work ever is under the command and control and the authority of the chief that they work for, which meant the chief gave them the authority to come to Foxborough. So if we had, so, and also, the other part of this was if a, the, the retirement board said having officers working outside of their class is an absolute no-no. So if you had a captain from Plymouth come over to Foxborough, sworn as a reserve, ends up with an injury where his career ends, he would retire as a Foxborough Reserve. Because that was the, that is the position he was working in at the time of the injury. All it would take is one officer to have something bad happen, and you and we would have no officers coming over. So what we had to do is we had to look at a way to ensure, to the best of our ability, to remove some of the liability from our 27 cities and towns who allow their officers to come over here, to give them some kind of support, especially to the chiefs, whether the chief could go back to their town manager or to their select board and be able to justify why they supported the Gillette operation. So they now come under Master and Law, there's a mutual aid agreement that was redrafted that made working in Gillette an event.
And even, you know, if I'm going on a vacation or a family emergency, right, I have two other people who are tips certified, like myself, right, and I brought one of them today with me and he's also a partner of it for, for the restaurant. So he will be there at all times, even if I'm not there, like if I'm gone on a family emergency or a vacation. But again, even if he's not there, there's one more person there at all times. So it's two person, three people at their, like, at the restaurant at all times. But I won't be there on just Wednesday. But every, you know, everything will be taken care of by, by the other partners if I'm not there.
Okay, no, perfect, and that's exactly what I wanted to hear. Because I'll be honest with you, everything you just said is perfect, but you're going to be the name on the license. And if you didn't answer it that way, say how much time you were going to be there, I would not be comfortable with putting your name on the license. So that, that's exactly what I want to hear, just to make sure that you, you're going to be there. Like I said, everyone's entitled to take a vacation, a day off, but I want to make sure that, and it's great that you have the other people.
Yep.
But for me, your name is on the license, not their name. So as long as, as you're going to be there the majority of time, that's good for me.
No more vacations. Trust me.
Go away from motion.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve a transfer of license application of an on-premises annual all alcohol beverages license from Kreshiva Inc. to Sidivinyaka LLC, remaining DBA Sandkelp Restaurant.
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck.
They still have one.
Review and vote on a common visula and annual entertainment license application for from Sidivinyaka LLC, DBA Sandkelp Restaurant to Washington Street.
Go ahead and do the motion.
Motion to approve an annual entertainment license application from Sidivinyaka LLC, DBA Sandkelp Restaurant to Washington Street.
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Motion to close the public hearing?
No, we already did that, there's one more motion though. Right, the entertainment?
Motion to approve an annual entertainment license application for from Sidivinyaka LLC, DBA Sandkelp Restaurant to Washington Street.
Second. Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Awesome.
Nice to be here.
Good luck.
Good luck, thank you very much. Collective bargaining agreement, is that one?
Yes.
Unit B.
Yes. Do you want to give a summary or do you want to, do you want me to?
Sure. Well, actually, why don't you do it?
Okay, sure. So we discussed an executive session, a contract that we've settled with ASME Local seventeen oh two, which is the water side, Unit B. With that, we've settled on colas, free, two and a half, two and a half. We clarified some holiday bereavement, personal and sick leave accruals, increased longevity pay by twenty-five dollars. Provided provisions for modified hours in the summer schedule and with a shift unpaid break flexibility. Worked on closing allowance stipends and a twenty-year step in year three.
In year three of the contract? Twenty-year step in the year three of the contract?
Yes, in the contract, yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve the collective, collective bargaining agreement for the Foxborough DPW Employees Union, ASME Local seventeen oh two, Unit B.
Second.
All in favor?
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Foxborough Cleanup Day.
AJ.
Come on up here. Oh, are we waiting for AJ?
I think I told them about it, but do we want to do, I think he should be here shortly, I haven't heard back.
All right, why don't we, why don't we take out of order, we'll go to the Foxborough Firefighters Monument Project.
Sure.
Joe, if you can find if he's coming.
Good evening.
How you doing?
I'm great, how are you?
Good.
So I have a little presentation that I need up to.
Could you give us your name?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Paul Bellum, Foxborough Fire Department.
Thank you.
So I have a little presentation to go through before, a little bit of a history lesson too. A lot of people don't know the instances of the Townhouse Fire, which is affected this town greatly, it affected the fire department greatly. So go through this little presentation.
This one?
All right. All right, so the Townhouse was built in eighteen fifty-seven, located right here, right on this property. It was, it was built for fifteen thousand dollars at the time. It was a large two and a half story wood frame with a beautiful bell tower on top that would ring when it was, when the firefighters were needed in town. It had beautiful arched windows, large meeting room on the second floor. It also had the high school in the rear of the building. And then on the rear, not attached to the building, there was the, the old fire station as well. So the Townhouse Building Committee Chair was EP Carpenter. And along with his cousin, he, they built the Union Straw Works, which became the largest straw manufacturing facility in the world. Coincidentally, he was also named the first woman of the Foxborough Fire Department. And then obviously on the Union Straw Works, it was located on Wall Street, about seven, about seven hundred feet from here. And on May twenty-eighth of nineteen hundred, a fire destroyed the Union Straw Works building in less than two hours, which was pretty phenomenal, that was quick. And then in the early morning hours of June fourth, nineteen hundred, a Foxborough firefighter was standing watch at the rubble of the Union Straw Factory. When he heard an explosion, he turned around, saw the smoke and fire coming from the Townhouse. Box thirty-two was struck for Central Street and South Street. And firefighters began arriving from home. As the fire spread to the bell tower, three firefighters ascended a ground ladder and began suppressing the fire. The chief noted the conditions were worsening and some of them down, when in an instant, the bell tower collapsed, causing the firefighters to fall with the burning bell tower. On June fourth, nineteen hundred, firefighter George Jocelyn, age forty-four, firefighter Joseph Watkins, age twenty-six, they perished here, right on this property. And on June ninth, nineteen hundred, firefighter Arthur Jocelyn, the brother of George Jocelyn, succumbed to his injuries. And a fourth firefighter, Sam Johnson, was gravely injured. And this marked the first line of duty deaths in the town of Foxborough for the fire department. On June fourth, twenty twenty-five, that will mark the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the devastating fire and we're looking to honor their sacrifice. I'm here to seek approval from the select board that a monument be erected on the site of the original Townhouse. So the proposed location for the memorial would be literally right behind this wall, in between the two bushes. I don't know if you can see, it's that red spot I just put there. It would be created a small paver-style walkway with landscape lighting and a, and a monument. The monument is kind of pictured up top, it's going to, it's going to be a granite plaque. It's twenty-six inches, granite monument, I'm sorry, stone, twenty-six inches wide by thirty-six inches tall. It'll have a slanted face on the top that will hold this brass plaque that has the whole story and including the names of everybody that was affected by that day. And the Townhouse, the image of the Townhouse, which is on the left upper, will be carved into the front of the monument. And that'll be the color of the monument that's behind it. It's called the dark Barry Gray. So this idea, proposal I presented to both Chief Kelleher and the Town Manager, as well as Tony and Chris Gallagher. And they have agreed and approved it. It'll be funded a hundred percent by donations, which we will be seeking on the fire department. And labor will be provided by our members. The monument's being designed and will be installed by Tribute in Stone out of Rantham. And they've been fantastic with working with us on the timeline. And the total cost of the monument itself is nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. And we're, we're seeking a goal of, of ten thousand dollars to raise. I ask that you consider this project and I'm seeking approval from the board. The installation date would be in early June and the date for dedication projected would be Wednesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-five. That would be the exact day, hundred and twenty-five years later. So I appreciate your time. You know, I have to talk into a lot of the younger guys over there at the fire station. They've had, they had no idea that we lost three guys in the line of duty back in nineteen hundred. They didn't realize that, I mean, the Foxborough Historical Commission, I spent a couple hours over at the Memorial Hall and the artifacts that they have and the pictures. And actually, on one of these slides, I do have a picture of the helmet. Maybe not. I think I broke it. There is a picture, in, in one of the cases at Memorial Hall, is one of the gentlemen who passed away that day, his helmet is still there. And to be able to preserve that history is, it's, it's unbelievable. That's a hundred and twenty-five years old, it's actually older than that, because I'm sure he's had it for a little bit before that. But this, this project would mean a lot to the fire department. And like I said, it's going to look, it'll look beautiful out right on the other side of this wall. So I'm just here to seek your approval. We will, we have a, a date for a fundraiser set at Station One if everything goes smoothly. And they're going to donate a portion of the proceeds to help out. And then I'm just going to solicit some businesses in town and hopefully be able to make up that difference, so.
Which you do direct your donations if you want to.
So we have a five oh one C three, the Friends of Foxborough Fire. And I'll have a link in a, a way, or you can drop checks off at the fire station. Attention to me and we can, we can take care of it from there. But I do have a, a five oh one C three, we have a PayPal account as well, where you can donate right over your phone. So, yeah.
So Paige, obviously you've been involved with this for a while now. There is no bylaw in the town that restricts or is there a naming kind of convention for monuments or stuff like that? I know this, like the schools had to come up with one because they were getting quite a few, but.
That I'm aware of for this, I mean, we have our asset naming that's in progress still. But beyond that, for this, no, I haven't heard of anything. And we did the volunteer monument out there a couple of years ago.
Right.
I don't recall any process for that as well.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure we weren't in violation of anything on that.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
And I, I think it's, I think it's time, it's a hundred and twenty-five years. Isn't there something dedicate, dedicated on the comment as well?
Yes, so there is a.
Mention of it.
Yep, there is a, there is a memorial on the comment that, yeah, it's a, it's a beautiful monument up there as well. It has their names on it. And I think that, that's a monument for all past members as well. To be able to put it here on the actual site, I think, means, means a lot to the fire department as well. I think that it's very fitting to have, have one here specifically just for those members.
Well thought out, thank you.
Thank you.
Having been on the committee that dug up this building and found some of the remnants from that, from that fire, I think it's a nice cause of what you're trying to do here, so.
Thank you, thank you.
You have anything, Deb?
No, great job.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the firefighter memorial, firefighter monument located at Forty South Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
She made it right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, Joe.
AJ was not able to make it tonight, so he asked me to take the lead role.
Awesome.
Good job.
Yes. Joe Garrity presenting on the Foxborough Cleanup Day Committee. And I'm asking for the Board of Selectmen's approval tonight to set Saturday, May tenth, twenty twenty-five as Foxborough Cleanup Day from nine to twelve. The date typically goes, we meet at Schneider Electric, sorry, but this is our eleventh annual Foxborough Cleanup Day. We took two years, we've been doing it since twenty thirteen. We took twenty twenty off for COVID and then after COVID, we did it in September, then we were going to keep doing it in September. But then this last year, we decided to go back to right around Earth Day. You can't do it right, you always can't do it in April because of Easter, school vacation week. But we continue to do it in the springtime, right around Earth Day for the environment. The day usually consists of, we meet at Schneider Electric parking lot and then we do like coffee, donuts, juice, we get our T-shirts, our assignments and our supplies needed for Cleanup Day. Then we go out to our spots around town and clean up. And then we have like a little pizza lunch, pizzas, sodas at the parking lot. Then we do a few different raffle items. We do Patriots tickets, Celtics tickets on AJ and Red Sox tickets and then a couple other raffle items. And then, then we have T-shirts. Last year, we dedicated the shirts to Jack Ossallett. This year, we're going to do it for two people, Jim McGowan, Stephanie, if you're listening.
I am, that makes me happy, Joe.
We're going to do it for Jim McGowan and Mrs. Goodwin, since they just passed recently, we honor them. And this is our eleventh year and it'll be the best ever yet Cleanup Day. So I, hopefully you guys recommend it for approval.
And Joe, if people want to volunteer, what do they do?
We have like a signup link, that'll be, it's foxboroughcleanupday.org. We have like a link, you put down your shirt size, just your basic information.
Good job, Joe.
Any questions of anybody?
Yeah, can we put it on the web, a link on the website to link it over there too, if anybody?
Sure. Motion to approve five ten twenty-five as Foxborough Cleanup Day?
Second.
All in favor?
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Awesome.
Very good job.
And then another point I want to make, when we used to do it in the, when we did it in the couple of years in the fall, we realized that the fall wasn't the best time because it's back to school time, the start of extracurricular activities and sports. The spring makes more sense for people wanting to do it.
Very good job.
We did it, we were good, it was a good idea after COVID because it was right around September eleventh, Day of Service.
Okay. Great job, Joe.
Thank you.
Good job, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, annual town meeting warrant.
Yes. So we finalized the warrant, in fact, Katie has it here for you to sign. But we have a slight addition that Chris is here to speak to. We received some positive news regarding some funding or loan around a water treatment plant. So we, we have to ask the select board to open the warrant tonight to add one item that Chris will describe to the warrant, then close the warrant and then vote the warrant in. And I know that you might have a few, if you, if you have any questions?
I haven't heard any from anybody.
We haven't heard any questions?
There are, we'll just ask them.
So Chris, if you want to just give an explanation of why we have to war, open the warrant and why it's worth our while to do so. And we have Bob Worley, it looks like, on Zoom as well.
Yep. So Chris Gallagher, the GPW Director, and Bob Worley is joining us by Zoom, Bob's the Water Superintendent. So we had submitted an application for an SRF loan, which is state revolving fund through their drinking water program. We did not make their draft intended use plan, which was put out early in the calendar year, so just after January. So we kind of thought it was dead in the water, didn't move forward with any warrant articles for town meeting. We found out on April eighth that they actually changed their draft plan, which is, is a rarity. And Bob probably pays attention to it more than I do. But so on April eighth, we found out that we needed to vote, the town needed to vote on accepting the SRF loan at town meeting by June thirtieth. So we had a very quick conversation last week and thought that this was the best approach. Katie, you know, really came up with the, the background and Bill to support this and bring this forward. So this is something that the, the loan itself, I don't know if I can get into that after we reopen it or just dive in now.
Why don't you, why don't you explain it?
While you get on the flow going.
So we're currently building our first PFAS treatment plant on the water system.
Explain what that is for people.
Sure, so PFAS, and this is where Bob comes in. The basics, PFAS is a, is a series of chemicals that's found in, in the ground. It's a groundwater chemical that actually comes from everything from Teflon. It's a groundwater chemical that actually comes from everything from Teflon to Gortex, microwave popcorn bags. I mean, there's a list of like 5,000 of these chemical compounds. We've been testing for them in our water. For a number of years now, EPA set an initial limit on what that limit could be in the drinking water. Mass DEP lowered that limit. EPA came back and said, we're going to make it even lower. So now we're at a point where we have to produce water that has a PFAS limit of four parts per trillion or less, which is to the point where there isn't machines that can actually treat or test to that level. But they're making us produce water that's lower than that level, four parts per trillion.
So if you can't test for it, how would you know if you died, God?
It's, it's a great question. But we do have PFAS in, in our water system in Foxborough, as does most of New England and the United States. So this is something that we're, we're doing our best to remedy. EPA in their, in their language is giving us till 2027. Bob, correct me if I'm misspeaking, but I believe 2027 to resolve the issue and put treatment in place to remove that chemical from the water system. At that point, we would have to start doing public notifications for the water being non-compliant with the regulations. So this second round of SRF funding that we have before you tonight would be to build our second PFAS treatment plant down at the Oak Street Lampson Road Treatment Plant. So this would give us two treatment plants for our PFAS chemicals. Those are our two biggest water supplies in town. Ideally, we would, in the long term, end up with a third treatment plant down at the Witch Pond Treatment Plant as well, which would then put all of our wells and treatment plants in compliance with the regulation.
So can I ask you a question then? If, if we get the two plants up and running, obviously before 2027, and we still don't have one of the plants, we're pumping water from all of them into the same system. So are we then still basically totally out of compliance because we don't have the one plant?
So we're, we're able to stop using the Witch Pond Treatment Plant for the short term and use the Chestnut Street and the Oak Street plants. And as long as our finished water into the system is compliant, we should be in compliance with the regulation, I believe. Bob?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
And those two plants at this point could produce enough water to meet the needs of the town?
Yes.
And then the second question is on the total cost of the plant. Is the 16 million the total cost?
That would be, that's the total estimated cost. The, the plant that we're building right now, the initial estimate was $14 million. So that's what we were approved through the SRF loan for. We actually received a very favorable bid for that project and the construction is only eight and a half million. The engineering side of it, you know, does drive that total project cost close to a million dollars. But that was one where we did the engineering design work ahead of time. This is one we're going to try to wrap in the, the design work into the SRF loan, which again will drive that cost up a little bit. But where we've designed one now, we kind of have the template to pick up and relocate over there. The guts of the plant should be very similar in design. It'll really be the outside, the site work itself that'll change a little bit. But that 16 and a half is what we expect the total cost to be.
How is this repaid? How is the loan repaid?
So it's a, it's a 20-year repayment. They fund, the state funds the project upfront. And then once the project's complete, the next fiscal year is when we would start our repayment. The PFAS loans are being given out at 0% right now. So it's a 0% interest loan. And there, it does come with some debt forgiveness, some principal forgiveness. So the existing plant at $14 million, we have a $1.4 million principal forgiveness once we start repaying that, that loan. We expect it to be similar on this, but we don't know until the time comes that we actually start repaying or get close to repaying the loan.
And how much does this affect the, the rate payers?
Um, we're, we're building it in. With the first plant, we did raise the water rates 10% from last fiscal year into this fiscal year. We do have our rate study ongoing right now, so we will have a rate hearing the week after town meeting. To set the next fiscal years, we are building that in, trying to soften the blow so that when we have to start paying that loan repayment, three years from now, it's not, you know, here we are at 30% increase. We'll try to, try to build it over time.
And Chris, I'm sorry, but if you could take just one minute, and we, we did put this in the newsletter, but one of the things that we've heard a lot is people complaining about their water rates. And I think when I started here 10 years ago, I remember people would come into the planning board with jars of water that were brown, you know? And now we don't see that. So Chris, if you could just take like 30 seconds and explain that this kind of stuff is why the water rates are going so high. It used to be just through chlorine in there and now there's all sorts of treatment requirements. Is that the case?
Yeah, so the, the filtration that we use now does take care of a lot of the iron and manganese issues that we, we have historically had in the system. Norton's still experiencing some of that. So really with Bob's guidance, you know, starting 12, 13 years ago now, Bob, you know, we brought in a hydraulic model for the water system. So when we flush our system, which we're doing twice, we do twice a year, we're doing it now. We're moving that sediment in a certain direction and removing that sediment from a system. And that, you know, ongoing, we do half the system in the spring, half in the fall, has really controlled that. There have also been what was known as, I go back to Roger Hill, the iron triangle, which was a section of pipe from the common up mechanic over to Chestnut Street and back over by Public Safety. It was a, a cast iron pipe system that held onto that iron and manganese. And any disturbance in the water system, a water main break, hydrants being used for fires, flushing, would stir all that sediment up and then it would take weeks before it would settle back down. Bob has, I believe, still has nightmares about the, the brown water complaints. They would have 40, 50 people a day coming into the Old Town Hall complaining about it and wanting it to be fixed. So, you know, since Bob has been here, I think we're, with this PFAS plant, we're north of $50 million that we've spent in the last 12 to 13 years on the system. It was, it was neglected. We have pipe in the system that is 100 years old. That life expectancy is about 50 years and we're, we're doubling that. So we're still, still a little bit in crisis mode, but you know, we have a path forward. As soon as we thought we were done with the green sand filter plants and remedying the, the iron and manganese issues in town, they hit us with PFAS. So now we're starting that treatment plant cycle all over again.
And one treatment plant can't handle multiple issues?
We, no, so the, the green sand filter plants are strictly, it's iron and manganese is, is what they're going to, they're going to remove that sediment. The PFAS chemicals and several others is what the, the activated carbon will filter those. The expectation is that if there's something else on the list in the future, that we can change the media within those filters to combat any future chemicals that we may come across or may EPA and DEP may bring forward.
So are these plants linked? So it's going from the original one from the manganese, then goes into the PFAS one and then goes to the either storage or supply?
Yeah, yes.
Paige, what's the cost of an average home in Foxborough?
Oh geez, I don't know.
A thousand, I think, roughly.
Four hundred?
Four to five hundred thousand, yeah.
Four thirty is the average.
So what, can we, can you determine what the cost would be per household if we were to have this favorably voted in?
I mean, we could do some math and figure that out.
Okay.
I think the, the advantage of.
It would be a 10%, at least a 10% increase though.
So it's the water rates, the, yeah, so we.
In the water rates, yes.
We increased the water rates 10% from last year to this year. You know, with this moving forward and having to repay this starting three years from now, hopefully we can build it in so that it's, you know, 7%, 7%, 7% and we can kind of ease it in. So that's not a 10% jump this year. That does, you know, the Water and Sewer Commission will, will take a couple of different models into consideration and, and vote what they see fit.
How many debt exclusions do we have out now, Paige?
Well.
I know three from last year.
Yeah, I'd have to look at what we're carrying on from all the old ones.
And one of them is already.
You have that pulled up, Eazy?
So if the average single family home is 645,000 in Foxborough.
I know there's a whole table that shows some dropping off and some coming on. I'll have that with me.
While, while I know we're all going to be paying this rate, obviously anybody who's using water in the process. But the other side of it is if we have a dictate to clean this out of the systems for the public health, getting a zero interest loan is far better than, you know, what we would be paying because you're going to have to do it anyway. So it kind of is, it's not like you can't, you know, okay, you might push it off a year or two.
Right.
But then now you're paying the interest and everything else that goes along with it, which makes the number bigger. Plus it makes the cost bigger two or three years from now. We've never seen anything come down in value cost wise to do this.
But I wonder if that, how fluid that cost is, given that the new tariffs and the way things are going in the, in the construction world price wise, it's going to go up maybe from that 16 million.
I think the 16 million is a conservative number and we're.
Especially if you're at eight.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at hopefully being out to bid early 2026 by the time we go through design and permitting with DEP for the plant. You know, again, we have, we don't even have a concept on this one yet as far as where it's going to go on the property because we just found out.
Is there anything really different in the plant though?
No, the, the guts, the guts should be the same.
Right, I mean, water flow obviously may be different from one to the other, but.
Yeah, it's really the site conditions that'll determine where the building can go, how we can connect it to the existing treatment plant on Oak Street versus obviously Chestnut Street will be slightly different.
And do we have enough land in the area that you need to?
Oak Street we do. Witch Pond, we're a little concerned with where it's going to go.
I, I'm just not comfortable opening the warrant on something that could maybe be put off till the fall or May because it feels rushed to me. And I don't know if that's how the, the voters will feel where this has just come up, you know, in the 11th hour.
So I think, I think the concern on my end would be if it's not voted by June 30th, we lose the, the grant funding. This was a fairly competitive round of, of grant funding or loan funding from the state. And like I said, we didn't make the initial cut. We, we actually some, had some higher PFAS levels come through in our testing that it made them reopen the ranking on Foxborough and brought us just above the line. So if, if we don't do it now, we lose that SRF funding and there's no guarantee we get it back. So not only do we lose the 0% interest, but we also lose any principal forgiveness and then we're borrowing it on our own. We also have that deadline of 2027 that we're up against. So I do, I completely understand that it's, it is last minute. We did do this same borrowing two years ago for the existing plant. It was voted on a town meeting in similar fashion, just a little more scheduled ahead of time because we, we were on that initial draft plan.
So I guess my, my thought, Deb, is I understand your concern, is that for town meeting, it should be made very clear or before town meeting what the cost is going to be associated with it so the taxpayers. But I think not putting it out there for the taxpayers to have an option to save the town money on a project that they have to do by just not doing it and then losing it and then somebody else get it versus letting taxpayers, you know, if not, if nobody put any information on taxpayers, could vote it down at town meeting when it dies. But if at least we, if it's put out and explained as to why it's being put out, number one, and number two, what the cost is, taxpayers will make the decision as to whether or not they agree with it. I just hate to lose, I hate to lose any of these funding sources that are, you know, when you, especially when you're dealing with the state. Now, is this federally funded? Is this, is there any concern that the federal side of this is?
This has all been allocated to the state already. So this is not coming from the federal level anymore.
And if there's any change to fluoridation at the federal level is?
We don't, Foxborough does not add fluoride to our water system, so that's not an issue for us.
And when this came down years ago, it wasn't, you know, if we wanted to put the treatment plant. It is, we are putting the treatment plants. And I think for the town to have the opportunity, like Bill said, to save some money on a zero interest loan, we'd be crazy to turn that, turn that down. And I think opening up the warrant, closing the warrant so that the, at town meeting, we have a chance to vote on it, I think is a fine idea.
And as far as opening and closing the warrant, that's, that's been done a number of ways in the past, opening and closing. But it's also been done when something like this came up for a special within the annual that happened even with less time. So we, we've opened the warrants with less time to be able to accomplish, not necessarily a PFAS project like this, but a project that was important that came in very late, but before. We still have a few weeks before town meeting, so I think there's still time to get the information out. I think you're asking some very valid questions on your cost because, you know, I would have that same question. But I think if the taxpayers hear the reasoning, hear what it's going to do, it puts us in compliance, but technically with the two plants, because the two plants can manage the town. So therefore we eliminate the issue on the third as being critical to happen in, in, in a short period. It's still got to happen to give us that flow back. But at least that then becomes less of a, an emergency environment for us. So, you know, our water rates are up, but you know, I guess I would ask, it, all towns around us, I can't imagine.
I mean, all towns, we're all in the same boat, same thing in Franklin. We're building PFAS plants. We just finished our treatment plants and the water rates. And just to clarify, I mean, does it helps or it doesn't help? It's not all residents who pay, it's the, the rate payers. So if you have a well, you don't pay.
Right.
And to answer your question, two debt exclusions are falling off. I believe it's Public Safety and one of the schools will be coming off, I think, next year, this year. So we, we do have some coming off. My computer just died, so I can't give any further detail on that. It's okay, I'm good. But we do have two coming off and so, but again, it's not really for all the rate pay, it's not all the taxpayers, it's, it's the rate payers. And I think to the, to Bill's point, I mean, if we're being mandated to do this, we'd have to maybe go out for a debt exclusion for this and we'd be borrowing. So we're basically saving all the cost of borrowing by getting an interest free loan. So it's basically in two plants, no interest. I mean, we're stuck doing them, it's probably the best way to do them, unfortunately.
I think some quick math to your point. So we have about 6,000 customers on the water, water system right now. So if you divide that 16 and a half million divided by the 6,000 customers over 20 years, it's $137 a year. Which is not insignificant, but, you know, and, and that's based on how much water you use. So obviously somebody like the businesses on Route One, they're using a significant amount of water over somebody in a single family home. So a single family home is, should be significantly less than that 137 a year. It does just compound because we have so many customers on the system and builds out.
So we have to do it by 2027? And is, and there's no guarantee that this interest free loan will be available were you to have to go after it in either the fall town meeting or next May's town meeting? There's no guarantee that.
Well, there wouldn't be a fall because they're not going to have this come up again.
They run it once a year, so you, you apply for it in the fall. They come out just after the, the beginning of the calendar year to say, here's our draft plan. If you're on the draft plan, then you would start this planning process back in January, get on the warrant and have time to build into that. We didn't make the draft plan, we didn't think this was going to happen. Between, you know, Bob and some increased PFAS levels in our system and the engineer that we had working on this for us, they, they petitioned the state and they managed to get them to re, re-rank our project to meet the minimum qualifications.
So, and correct me, this is not a debt exclusion because obviously it's paid by water rates? So, you know, even if we lost, you know, dropped off a couple of debt exclusions, yes, that saves taxpayers some money. Assuming nothing else is filling the gap, saves taxpayers money, but it doesn't affect, you know, the fact that this is actually being paid by water rates instead of tax dollars?
And it did, you know, there's, they did come up with the Water and Sewer Commission and they just did get their support as well to move this forward.
Hey Bill, if I may?
Sure.
You know, I, I've had lots of conversa, well, lots, but some conversations with Bob and Chris, especially when I was on AdCom. And I, I've heard a number of times from them that the state loves to mandate, but they don't like to, they, they won't fund what they're mandating. So even though, you know, and if Chris said there may be. So, even though, you know, and if Chris said there may be some, some principal forgiveness, that doesn't seem like something they, they've done in the past, so that might be something that might want us to, you know, go ahead. And of course, it's going to be voted at town meeting, but I think the, the fact that it's an, it's an interest-free loan is, for me, is huge. And I will say, a couple of people, you know, as soon as they, they saw the agenda, a couple of people reached out and was like, okay, what is, you know, because, you know, the last couple of years, we, we've put forward a lot of, a lot of money for a lot of projects, for projects that needed to be done, and, you know, and that's how I kind of explained it. I, you know, I said, from, you know, the information that Chris and Paige had told us about, about this loan, you know, listen, if the people don't want to vote for it, then they won't vote for it. But it's hard to pass up interest-free money, and, you know, especially when, like Chris said, we don't know if it will. So, I'm, I'm good with, with opening and closing the warrant, putting it on, and, you know, if it, if it doesn't, if it doesn't get voted, then, then, I guess then Bob and Chris will have to go to Plan B. But, you know, I, I think timing, unfortunately, I don't think we have a choice if we, you know, with Chris's deadline of, Chris, was it the end of June that you'd have to?
Yeah, so, SRF needs this voted by June 30th in order for us to make, make the list.
So, yeah, I, I kind of think, for me, it's a no-brainer whether it gets voted at town meetings, we'll, we'll just have to wait and see, but to put it on, for me, is a no-brainer.
And again, Steph, thank you, I'm, I'm going to come back with, the rates and everything are, are great, but if, if putting this second plant in play can bring us into compliance without the third plant being in, in play at this point in time, that to me makes it a no-brainer too because it's basically putting us ahead of the pressure of having to have that third plant up and running. So, again, we know it's going to have to be done because we need that water flow, but, you know, at least at this point, it, it allows us to, to get ourselves ahead of it a little bit, so. Want to do a motion?
Motion to open the warrant?
Second.
Favor?
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes?
Dennis, yes.
Stephanie?
Stephanie, yes.
All right, next motion. Do we have a motion to actually put it on?
Motion to put the Water Department's article on the, the May 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant in the sum of sixteen million, five hundred thousand.
Second.
All in favor?
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes?
Dennis, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
We have to close the, yeah, we have to close the warrant.
Thanks, Bob.
Motion to close the warrant?
Second.
All in favor?
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes?
Dennis, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Thank you very much, Bob.
Hey, guys, I just want to let you know I did text Katie, I'm going to be hopping off the meeting now, okay?
Okay, I have one for us, too.
All right, thanks, see you in a couple of weeks.
She didn't hear you, it was funny.
All right, so, the annual town meeting warrant, it's, are we doing that now, are we doing that, yeah?
No.
So, we're going to vote the annual town meeting warrant, but were there any, I didn't have any after going through the few presentations we had, did anybody have any questions on any of the warrant article items that have been out there, concerns with?
Well, there's, there's two that I personally am going to vote no on.
Okay.
But other than that, no questions about them.
All right, so why don't we pull those two and then we can vote the rest of them as a group?
Yeah, the two citizens input whatever numbers those are.
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Yeah. I would move, well, how do we want to word it? Approve the warrant in minus?
Well, are you, so-
Excluding.
Are you going, you're just, you're going to vote to sign the warrant, that's one thing.
Right.
But then you also want to take a position on each article?
Correct.
So, which one are you doing right now?
So, we're going to, we, we want to take a position basically on all the articles except for the two, a positive, we want to take a positive position, I believe, on all the warrant articles except for the two that Doc is bringing up. So, if we, we can basically exclude those two and say that we're voting the warrant this way, and then do the, those two individually and see how that vote comes out.
So, I would, I would say like vote to approve Articles One to Twenty-Six and Article Thirty, vote, and then motion to approve Article Twenty-Seven and Twenty-Eight, and then everyone can vote how they like.
Correct.
And just to make it, that was so seamless, except I want to add in that you probably should leave out Twenty-One because that's the police contract, just because we don't have one and you haven't heard it yet.
Correct.
So, you probably should just leave that out, too.
Leave that one out also.
So, would you like to do that again?
Sure.
And I would recommend approval, not approval.
But I can't say it, so you'll have to say it after me. Okay, so, motion to-
I've got Twenty-One, Twenty-Seven, and Twenty-Eight.
Right, so, motion to approve-
No, motion to recommend approval.
Motion to recommend approval for Articles One to Twenty, Twenty-Two to Twenty-Six and Article Thirty.
Number Twenty-Nine.
Okay.
Wouldn't we do it the other way around? Motion to approve, recommend the approval of all the articles with the exception of-
Yeah, that works.
That's easy.
Yeah.
Twenty-nine in there as well.
Right, you want to throw that in there, too?
You want it in part of your yeses.
Yes, yeah.
Correct, so, so, if you don't mind-
There's three, go ahead.
Move to recommend an approval of all the warrant articles with the exception of-
Twenty-One?
Twenty-One, Twenty-Six, Seven, and Twenty-Eight.
And Twenty-Nine? No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Twenty-nine, we want in.
So, there's three.
Yeah. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Mark, yes.
Bill, yes?
Debbie, yes?
Dennis, yes.
And Steph's going?
You don't have to do real call anymore, no?
Right, Steph's going, yeah.
Oh, because Steph's going, okay.
Okay.
Awesome. So, I will say, move to accept, what, what was the first one, Twenty?
Twenty-One.
Twenty-One?
Twenty-One, Twenty-Six.
Should I say move, no action on Twenty-One?
No, move to accept, and then-
Move to recommend approval.
Okay, move to recommend approval of Article-
Twenty-One.
Twenty-One.
I'd do Twenty-Seven and Twenty-Eight separately, and then Twenty-One would probably be no action because there is-
That's what I meant, no action on Twenty-One.
Twenty-One, but on the other two.
Okay.
Yeah, so, move no action on Article Twenty-One.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then, move to approve Article Twenty, recommend approval of Article, what's the first one? Twenty-Seven?
And Twenty-Eight.
Twenty-Eight.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Don't.
No. Those are the two citizens input-
Those are the two citizens' input ones?
That he came in front of us. Now, my opinion is I want to vote no on those.
Right, okay.
But you guys, I want, you guys can vote as you want.
Right.
My opinion is I want my voice out there that I say no.
So, just, just to be clear, that's the Indisoule Street reconstruction, and it's the area in front of Ocean State Job Lot Reconstruction by citizens' input. So, right now, there's a motion to accept those citizens' petitions, and so a yes vote says you're agreeing with it, and a no vote says you're not. Okay, so, everybody clear?
Right.
All right, so, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed?
No.
Okay.
And, and the opposition, just for the people out there, is because we already have plans. We have good plans going forward. Our DPW chief did a great job explaining, you know, what is coming forward, and we just really don't need to spend the time going there.
Right, I agree. Okay, are we up to town meeting?
Okay. So, election is, geez, it's coming up in two weeks, May 5th, and then the town meeting is the following week, Monday, May 12th, starts at 7:00 PM. Hopefully, everybody knows that. There's an annual town meeting warrant review scheduled for April 28th, that's Monday, two weeks, well, just under two weeks from now, on Monday at noon here in this meeting room, but it will also be broadcast on Foxborough Cable Access, and it, they record it and run it, so folks can tune in to hear all about, we'll have department heads here talking about the warrant articles. So, it's a great opportunity for folks who want to come to town meeting to hear the background and really get educated prior to coming to the meeting.
Paige, if I may, too?
Yeah.
Did I read in the gem that you go into the senior center also to discuss it, or is the discussion going to be here?
Yes, that they come to me for that one.
They'll be coming here, okay.
But I am going to the senior center the day after Memorial Day. So, speaking of, the last day at the senior center is May 1st, and the grand opening for our new community center is May 16th. Unfortunately, I will not be able to be there, I don't think Bill's going to be there.
He'll be back.
Oh, you'll be back? Oh, lucky, you're good. So, unfortunately, I'll be traveling, but Walnut Knoll, the Affordable Housing Project on Walnut Street, they still are accepting applications. We are seeing a heavy turnout for the lower-cost affordable units, the thirty percent area median income ones, a slower rollout on the sixty and eighty percent AMIs. So, folks are still interested, please, there are still some availability in those apartments for the higher incomes, so please go ahead and apply. We have a link on our website. The Fire Department received some grant funding through the second round of the firefighter safety equipment grant awards. They got ninety-five hundred dollars for that equipment. Under the SAFE, which is Student Awareness of Fire Education Grant Program, they got fifty-seven hundred dollars. And then twenty-four hundred dollars through the Senior SAFE Grant Program, which focuses on fire prevention, education, and service for older adults. So, we're pleased to see those. DPW is going to be working on the Central Street Veterans Parking Lot this spring. We're waiting for the asphalt plants to open and get on the schedule, but we did get another round of funding from Senator Feeney and our retired state rep, Jay Barrow, so that work will be done before June 30th, so we're excited to see that come along. Inspector General Jeffrey Shapiro, Shapiro, for some reason, is visiting me on May, May 1st, so hopefully I don't end up in procurement jail, I think it's just a meet and greet, but very interesting when his assistant asks to come meet you, and I was just certified by them, so it's an interesting timing, but it's probably just a mere coincidence, so I'll keep you posted. And this afternoon, Bill and Deb and I were at Patriot Place for Chick-fil-A's Groundbreaking. They're planning on opening in the fall of 2025. We have two openings on the Personnel Board. We are, and from a job posting, we have a program coordinator for the farmer's market out there, programmer coordinator for Little Wreckers, junior counselor, recreational instructional assistant, and a summer recreation counselor. And then, as usual, we have our DPW Water Tech One position available. I didn't think, do we have any town properties, Katie, did I miss that? Okay, good. And then I have some project updates here. So, let's see, Bell Traffic will begin installing a mast-arm foundation for the Walnut Street Run Forty signals, starting on Monday, April 28th, so they'll be back out there, and they're scheduled to be completed out there by the end of June. For sidewalk reconstruction, South Street from Paula to Fairway will begin Thursday of this week and should be complete by Memorial Today, Memorial Day, weather dependent. I'm now skipping. Seventy-six Main Street septic repairs should be completed tomorrow. Well, that's good news. The PFAS treatment plant is underway with a February 2026 completion, and the DPW garage, the steel is up, some paving is going to occur next week, and they're still planning on the December 9th completion. We have six memorial benches still available, so if folks want to go to the town's website under Select Board, I think you'll find it there. And then Touch a Truck is scheduled for May 17th, from 10:00 AM till noon. Thank you, Katie. And then the last thing I'll bring up, as assigned, was to ask the board if you've had a chance to look at the proposed schedule for next year. It's exact same as la, this year we're in, except it's adjusted one day for the Tuesday. So, Katie pulled this together, and if you want to consider that as our schedule for next year, and that is all I have.
Do we need to approve that, is there a-
You do, but it's under Action Items. And also, just to add, the police chief and the Gil, our local inspector, had an update with Suffolk on their project, how you amended the hours of their construction work, and there have been no complaints and everything's running smoothly. They had their thirty-day update last week via Zoom.
And they have been running the late shifts at this point?
They have, yep.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. As far as the Select Board updates, I don't have anything other than it was nice to, to see another business coming into town. They obviously have a very good record as far as hiring, you know, people, local people to operate and, and be involved with their, with their business, so I think that's just one more opportunity for people who are interested. Obviously, we like to see all of our businesses be successful, so that's, that's coming forward. But other than that, I don't have anything else. Is anybody else on the board?
No.
Okay. Action items?
Motion to accept the donation of four hundred and fifty dollars by the Haddeman, LeBrash, and Smith families for the youth police program.
Second.
All in favor?
Ma, oh, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Accept, motion to accept the donation of a Bose portable Bluetooth speaker system from an anonymous donor for the community center.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.